So for the ice savers team.
Nope, not yet, not yet. Okay, alright. Good evening, everybody. I call the meeting today for the Roseville Area School Board, school, Roseville Area School District School Board Meeting on May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five. Acting Clerk, Menix Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Absolutely. Director Dr. Frank Shaw?
Here.
Director Goggins?
Here.
Director Bogaszewski?
Here.
Clerk, Acting Clerk Clark is here, and Acting Chair Dr. Rose Chu.
Here. Thank you. So now let's see, do we have any adjustment today?
We do have an administrative recommendation to table our closed session for labor negotiations this evening.
Okay, great. Well, entertain a motion to do that? So moved?
Second.
Okay, so.
Any discussion and then we'll vote.
Yeah, any discussion on that? Okay. Alright, would you read the motion? Is that, is that the one that we?
You can read the motion, or Director Goggins just made the motion based on my recommendation. So either way.
Alright. I moved that we tabled the discussion, the closed session discussion around our contracts until June.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I said that incorrectly. I tabled it till June. I would just like to table it indefinitely until the appropriate time. So I'd like to amend my.
Amendment.
I second your amended motion.
Okay, I'll get this right. Any discussion? Okay, call the question.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you. Okay, I will get this right. So next, we have some special guests today.
Very special, so excited. I think for folks in the audience too, we have some shifts in leadership roles on the board. So it's just like a classroom, right? In terms of how we work together. So thank you all for being here. First, I'd like to ask our Edgerton Elementary Ice Savers to come up to the board table. And I'd like to ask Dr. Chang and Ms. Collins if you'd like to speak about your team and the experience. Please, everyone come forward. We can share, just make sure you speak into the microphone. You can share them. And thank you, family members and supporters for being here as well.
Well, the sixth graders have a presentation to talk about where they came up with the idea and just our progression through this competition. But we did become national finalists. So out of thousands of schools, and a lot of them were high school schools, we were the top ten. And when we went to Washington DC, we were the youngest. So that was pretty amazing.
Should we just start with a round?
And when we became finalists, we won fifty thousand dollars worth of Samsung technology and materials. And then we were against all the high schoolers and people in the community voted. And we got the most votes, so we won the Community Choice Award, which gave us another ten thousand dollars.
Wow.
So the sixth graders wanted to share a little bit about their idea and how everything progressed.
Yes.
Joaquin?
So to like start off, we brainstormed ideas. And we like made a list and we took a vote. And we came up with a problem, and the problem we came up with was people falling through ice on lakes. It's a problem in Minnesota, and it can be dangerous. So we created a device to sense the thickness of lakes based off of that problem.
So the reason why we decided, oh wait a second, this is too far away. The reason why we decided on this is because if you look at Minnesota, we're known for having ten thousand lakes. It's probably more than that by now. But we're known for having ten thousand lakes, and also if we look at the statistics, it's more than two hundred, it's around two hundred and fifty people dying each year, just in America. And imagine how many more people die in the rest of the world. So looking at that, we've seen that there has been a lot of recent deaths. And that's something that we really wanted to look at. So that's the main reason why we took this.
And, sorry? And after that, we have created a device that has, it uses a micro:bit to read the data from a sensor that will detect how far like the nearest surface is. So we will use that for how far the ice is, and the micro:bit will then read that. And that data will then be sent through to an app that we've coded.
We created the app on MIT App Inventor as well as micro:bit. We had to create three sections of code. One to transfer the data from micro:bit to a spreadsheet. And then from the spreadsheet to the app, and then to refresh the data on the app.
So that's pretty much how we did it.
It's a bit simplified, so yeah.
Yeah, a lot simplified. Took a lot longer than we made it sound. But then those two went to DC, did a bunch of fun stuff.
It was fun.
Present, presented. We wrote a song. So if that's okay with y'all, can we sing it?
Absolutely.
Don't fall through ice. I know you're looking at that lake. And you're feeling kinda brave. Check the app, you'll be alright. Don't fall through the ice.
Thank you for your time, you ice savers.
Incredibly impressive.
Incredible.
So impressive.
Any comments from board members?
So, so does the app sing the song to you?
Uh, yes, we actually coded in the song for like a play along video. So it does, I mean, I think it's hours of fun.
Alright, so, so you, you've, you've made this app, and it works, you've, you've tested it?
Yes, we just don't have internet right now, and we don't have any of our devices in an app.
We don't have any ice.
So.
So, so, but, but I wanted to ask, what is the minimum amount of thickness of ice that, that it will detect?
Um, it's about four inches is what you should be on it, like when you should be on it. We can probably put it even deeper and have it be like signified for like trucks and cars and ice fishing tents. But we're really just working on like if it's thick enough for people to be on. So that's the main thing we're looking at right now. We probably will even advance it more to be able to make it so that you can actually have more like depthness. And Joaquin's actually planning on trying to like continue the device. And he'll, he can talk more about that in a sec, but that's our plan. So go ahead, Joaquin.
Also to answer, to furthermore answer the question, it does have a limit on how much it can read because instead of having two sensors on the device, you don't have it with us. It has, it sends out a sound wave and then it comes back, so it has to flip over because it's only one module. So there is a limit. I don't know how, how much that is.
Uh huh, uh huh. So have you, have you tested it on real ice? Have you gone out to a lake?
No, but we've tested it on walls and in, inside water. So it works in both of those.
You sort of had like test lakes.
Because we don't, we didn't really have.
We ran out of time.
And we didn't have much ice.
Okay, 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 good, good.
It's a little bit of a problem.
And, and have you thought about putting your app onto Google Play?
Uh, yeah, we're considering it. But the main thing is we want to perfect the, the device before we get an app out. Because it'd be kind of pointless to be like, oh yeah, be self-reliant on this app, and then have it just fail.
That could be very dangerous.
Yeah. So yeah.
Any other question? Yeah, please.
I was wondering how you prepared and learned how to, what the code would be able to do and what was required.
So, um, what we kind, what we did is we did a lot of research, and other people can say more about that. But we did a lot of research on how thick the ice has to be and just kind of learn more about where it should be and how thick the ice is, and more of the problem. So does anybody else want to comment on that too?
Short answer to that question is probably YouTube. Lots of YouTube videos.
Yeah.
Yeah, and our teacher.
Dr. Chang.
Yeah, Dr. Chang is a big, big.
He contributed a lot.
A lot.
So speaking of Dr. Chen, do you have anything to add, or Sue, do you have anything to add?
I just want to say I'm so proud of these kids and what they're capable of. And just their ability to not only work together, because it was a larger group than this, working and collaborating with one another. But just the ideas that they brought into it and the creativity, it went beyond STEM, right? They added that art piece with the songwriting and all that, and everybody had their own strengths. And they played up to it, and so I was really proud of them to, for them to utilize the strengths that they had in order to bring this whole group together.
Thank you.
I think we have like twelve or thirteen members of ours. Yeah, we have twelve, we have twelve members.
Wow. So I have a question. So what is next, like?
Um, well, in our presentation, we were planning on maybe partnering with the Department of Natural Resources. And I'm not the big expert on that, so somebody else can take that.
Oh, okay. So basically, we're trying to save lives, obviously. And we, as an elementary school in a decently small sized district, we don't have money to do all this. Just like, plain and simple. So like if we do like a partner with the DNC or something, we can like say, product, take it. Save people, like basically, and then like it helps save lives. And we can do it decently low of cost besides everything that it costs to make that.
Yeah, and also talking about that, like we decided to work with the Department of Natural Resources, or like try to, instead of just like trying to sell it so that it can be available to more people than just like the people who can't afford it or like have property of the lakes.
Plus, if we add only available to buy, I don't think a lot of people would want to buy it. Because they'd be like, why am I buying it? Everybody else is on this lake. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We are all very proud of you. Thank you.
We're gonna get a group photo with you out in the hall. Thank you so much for being here.
Well done, wow. So great. And we have more.
Yes.
Is that right?
Next, it's my privilege to introduce Coach Jody Killanen and our state speech qualifiers.
Wow.
We'll give you a round of applause. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having us. So yes, as you said, Jody Killanen, I am the, our head speech director at Roz. And very excited that we had a very successful season. And we had four students that advanced to the state tournament in April. And two of the students were in one category together, so it ended up being three entries, but four students. And I will let them introduce themselves, and they can tell you the category that they advanced in. And then if you just want to do like a quick snippet about what your category is.
Yes.
Um, my name is Summer, and I advanced to state in the category of discussion. And basically what discussion is, is pretty much like this. You mimic a table setting, so like a city council or a school board meeting. And you discuss a proposition and have to create your own agenda to it. It's a pretty multi-step process, but it's a fun activity.
Uh, my name is Logan Dom, and I'm actually in a category where my, I have a partner. So we were part of the one entry, two people. My partner couldn't be here today, but we basically take a script and we basically act it out for ten minutes. Our piece this year was about a girl being, who gets diagnosed with breast cancer and how her and her friend cope through it.
Wow.
So Maya Hamilton was Logan's duo partner, and then Liam Seacon also advanced to the state tournament in a category called storytelling, which is exactly what it sounds like. You have a chance to prepare a story, you have thirty minutes to prepare that story. So it's a little bit extemporaneous, but you also have a little bit of prep time. And they're just like kind of fairy tales type stories.
Interesting.
Wow.
Yeah.
So with storytelling, are you given a character, or how do you?
So the way that category works is there have, there's fifteen stories that the students prepare during the season. And then before the round, when they are speaking, they choose from like a computer program, one of those fifteen stories they've been preparing, and then they have time to prepare that. So it is a full story, and so they're doing a narrator, they're doing characters within that story. Like, I mean, really imagine like a children's story or a fairy tale that you would tell to someone and making it come alive. You can put your own spin on it a little bit, but they're, they're pretty picky about trying to keep it really close. But it's, it's a story that, they have, they have seven minutes to tell it. And the story might, if you were to just read it straight on, it might take twelve minutes to tell. And you have to figure out how to, what do you cut, what do you modify so that you have, get it in that seven minute timeframe? And then there's, yeah, there's, you know, there's, I'll take a moment to advertise for anyone watching this today. Their cat, the speech really has, it has thirteen different categories from the storytelling and humor to discussion to the duo where you get to be with another partner, and there's dramatic, and there's current events, and there's poetry. And there's persuasive speaking. So really, we try to talk about like using your student voice to get your voice heard in an effective way. And it's really all, there's all types. So it's get, um, how do you use effective communication to get your voice heard and tell your story? And that's just a theme we always want to empower our students and the stories they have to tell.
Wow. So with discussion, do you get a proposal, or do you create your own and use it all year, or what do you do?
We get a proposal and the competitive aspect of it that makes it different from like debate, where everything's basically arranged prior to the meet itself, is that you get it the day of, basically. The actual task, whatever it's about. This year it was about changes in the workforce. So that could range between AI usage to just labor shortages in certain industries. Those things are generated day of, so it requires different judging. And you have to actually be on as a leader and an improvisational person in a group, whether or not you have any research on it yet, or whether or not you had coaching prior to the experience. It's like competitive discussion.
Imagine you were being judged at this meeting of who was the most effective at moving the agenda forward and accomplishing a task. That's basically what discussion is.
I was just thinking, I need to take that class.
We do have an amazing coach. She wasn't able to be here tonight, but our, our discussion coach, she could come and give you pointers.
There you go.
But there's an outline presented by the Minnesota State High School League at the beginning of the year that has different bullet points, kind of some ideas, so that the coaches kind of know what they might be seeing in the day of. So to help the students prepare for it. But that's what's prepared at the beginning by the Minnesota State High School League.
And speaking of coaches, my coach works in politics. So for a lot of students who aren't familiar with like the workings of that, who aren't familiar with what board meetings look like and don't have that upward social mobility, for a lot of people to get involved in discussion, it's actually really, really freeing because then they can get those jobs and those post-college opportunities that they might not have been able to.
Yeah, wonderful. Question for them.
How long have you been doing it, and why did you get involved in?
Um, I started my freshman year, I'm only a sophomore now, and I got involved because my friends Ellen Lauren and Chrissa were on the team. And they said I talked too much. I just give too many opinions, and it's been, they were right. It's been a really great way to give more opinions in a more constructive environment.
I love that, wow.
This is my third year on the team. I'm a junior. I joined my freshman year because, I'm gonna be honest, they said it looked good on a college resume. And I didn't do too well my first year, but then my second year, I kind of got my footing. And I realized that like, it's much more than just a thing on a college application. It's like a way that I can use my voice and a way that I'm able to express myself and to create bonds with people.
Thank you.
How did you decide on your, on what you were going to perform?
Um, so my coach picks it out from year to year. Last year, my piece was about queer mental health and suicide. And it was something that both me and my partner were very passionate about. And then this year, my coach picked it out about breast cancer because it was something that impacted both me and my duo partner.
So proud of the two of you, yeah, please do.
So, um, in Illinois, six hundred miles away, and like six hundred years ago when I was in high school, I, I did it there. And it was humor and extemporaneous speaking. Very similar.
Those are very different skills.
That I was, it, it was, it was easy to just make crap up, and it was funny. So there you go. Well, and I think as you alluded to, in, in U2, it's, 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 it's not even, it's not even the presentation part. It's the thinking and the prep and the planning and having the, almost in panic mode, think about, what am I gonna say? How am I gonna structure it that, you know, and I think you recognize it's gonna, it's gonna serve you well in, in life. I hope you stick with it because it should be, in addition to the resume, it gives yourself confidence, you know? So, yeah.
Thank you very much for your support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yes, thank you. I just realized that I don't think I ever taken public speaking or speech in high school or college. Yeah, I never did. So that's why, it explains a lot, no?
I was actually in original oratory and represented Ramsey High School at the National.
Wow. Alright, let's get back to our agenda here. Oh, that was just heartwarming, yeah. Do we have any summary of community input that require action? How many one?
Nope.
Okay, great. So now I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the retirement.
So I move.
I'll move, oh, you got it.
I moved it.
You got it.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, great. Um, any discussion on that? Otherwise, we'll go for, go for vote here? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. So, um, Acting Clerk Menix, Clerk, would you please do the retirement?
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to, we have two retirees I'd like to recognize tonight. Timothy O'Brien, who's the Community Education Manager, retired at the end of June. Minister O'Brien has worked for our district for sixteen years. And then we also have Kirsten Peterson, Spanish teacher at Roseville Area High School. Will retire on June eleventh. And Ms. Peterson has worked for our district for nine years. So we appreciate all the time that they spend in our district and all the things they've done for, together their combined twenty-five years of service to our district, so.
Thank you.
And I would open them, and I would motion that we accept their retirement.
I'd like to second with great appreciation. We've had opportunity to work with them. And just, they've added so much to our district and really appreciate their service.
Any discussion? So let's go for a vote here. All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. So we got gifts. We always like to kind of highlight that. And Director Bogaszewski will read the list today.
Thank you. And I, I will probably do it in a little different order than they're printed. So nobody panic when you sense that I'm doing that. So for school needs at Roseville Area High School, we received a monetary gift from Cybergrants US Bank in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. For the Edie Williams Elementary School for Student Needs, we received a gift, a monetary gift from Lutheran Church of the Resurrection. From Samsung Electronics America, related to the group we just saw, we received a monetary gift for technology and classroom supplies for Edgerton Elementary School. Thanks to the Edgerton students that won the, the contest. We received two monetary gifts for Harambe for the Osprey Wild Field Trip. One from Montgomery Lodge two five eight AF and AM. And the second from the Minnesota Masonic Charities. We received a monetary gift for the Speech and Girls Track Program at Roseville Area High School from Smash Park Minneapolis over on County Road C. We received a monetary gift from the Roseville High School Boys Lacrosse Team, Boosters, for scrimmage officials for Roseville Area High School. We received a monetary gift from the Roseville Powerlifting Booster Club for additional coaching staff for the powerlifters at the Roseville Area High School. We received a monetary gift for general district needs from Aaron Mastrian via Your Cause Blackbowed. Again, just to be used as discretion in district. And then we received a number of gifts for the Boys Golf Program at Roseville Area High School, all monetary gifts. Received monetary gifts for the Boys Golf Program from Gwen Benham, from Elizabeth Schultz Smith and Timothy Smith, from Ryan and Catherine Westby, from Kevin and Kimberly Elm, from Rebecca and Christopher Murphy, from the Timothy and Lawrence Engel Foundation, from Chris and Marcy Heights, from Jeffrey Troska, from David Heckman, from Chad Funfinger and Carla Spadnik, from Susan Campion Blumquist, from HMS Holdings P L L C, doing businesses Wildwood Chiropractic Center, from the Craft Hair Collective, from Tipsy Steer, the restaurant in Roseville, from Viking Demolition and Specialty Services, from Cox Insurance Associates. And finally, again, all of those for the Boys Golf Program at the high school, or Roseville Area Schools, David and Kelsey Sitek. So again, a very generous, very generous from our supporters, individuals, businesses, who really obviously love our kids and are willing to show it through their donations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So now we will go into the next item, reports and non-action item. Let's have Associate Superintendent Melissa Sonic.
Thank you, Dr. Chu. So tonight we'll review Policy Five Twenty, which is our student discipline policy. We review this policy on a yearly basis. We also reviewed Policy Five Twenty earlier this spring with a team that was made up of students, staff, administrators, families, and community members. The purpose is to review the policy and to determine if it's working as intended. Tonight is the first reading. As you may remember from last year, there were some pretty significant legislative changes that were added. And our policy increased by about five pages in our last annual review. So I thought I would start by just highlighting some of those changes that are in the policy. This is one of our longer policies, I think it's twenty-one pages. In section five point two, there is language around not withholding recess. So that was a new addition that we made last year. In section five point four, you'll also notice a definition of non-exclusionary discipline and language around dismissals. Just so we're all working with the same understanding, non-exclusionary discipline policies and practices means policies and practices that are alternatives to dismissing a student from school. In section five point four point four, there's language around providing access to student work and assignments during suspensions. In section five point eleven, there's language around K-three suspensions that align to the two thousand twenty-three legislation. And in section nine point oh, there is language in a process for outlining discipline, our discipline complaint process. So those are just some highlights that we added to the policy in our last review that are a little bit newer. Next, I'll share some of the themes that came out of our policy review. We'll start with the parts of the policy that are working as intended. Feedback that we got from the group is there is an evident belief that we want all students to feel included and safe at school. Roseville Area Schools overall are using many proactive behavioral strategies such as things like restorative practices, positive behavior intervention systems, PBIS, and conferring both with students and partnering with families. The policy is being used consistently, and there's follow-through. Our policy also has options and alternatives to disciplaring, disciplinary action. That's listed in section five point oh, so there's a range of responses that we have to draw from. And we're following procedures for students who have IEPs or specialized services. So that was some of the feedback or the themes that came from the group when we did the policy review. An element of the policy that could be better includes ensuring all staff are aware of the policy and maybe breaking it up into chunks and sharing it with staff. So we actually have one principle that's gonna process that a little bit with their site team and think about like what that could look like and maybe be a pilot or an early adopter. So we can think about how we can ripple that out throughout the district. So that's kind of our review, but at this time, there's no recommended changes to the policy. But we welcome any feedback that you have, or questions that you might have about the policy.
Um, a couple of years ago, we were, we were having a discussion about edible cannabis and adjusted some of the wording to reflect that. And I was wondering, has that worked well? Are we having any concerns about that in our schools?
It's a good question. I would want to go back to our secondary sites and get more feedback. I know that there's things that have certainly occurred that we've been responsive to. I think the policy, the way it's written, allows us to be responsive and address it. But if you wanted specific feedback around how often it occurs or what happens when it occurs, I can check into that, too.
It was more from a policy standpoint, ensuring that we were providing the necessary guidance and direction that allowed that, handling that in our school settings.
I think that part, there's clarity around, yes. Good question.
Any other comments? I have to say, I really appreciate the idea of the chunking, right? Because it is a big
It is.
Big document with many pages and what does it mean to really like understand it, demystify it, so that we could actually implement it, right? As intended, so I really appreciate that, yeah.
I think where it's broken up into like more digestible chunks, that's in a little bit more user-friendly language, is in our student handbooks that can be found online, that are digital for each school as well. So that's where I think families go to a little bit more quickly and maybe students versus the actual policy, but that's kind of one way that we were going to explore it a little bit more.
I do wonder if there are ways to maybe visualize the framework of it, just a thought. Right, kind of, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, my question was just around circles. I know that restorative circles was something that, last time we had this discussion as a board, there were some schools that were a little farther advanced than other schools, and it sounds like from your update, that, is that correct to say that we're being able to do that in all our buildings?
I think we could safely say that circles take place at all of our schools. I think to which degree and how often and how many circle keepers we have, there's a more of a range of variability. But one of the things that we did last year was we asked each school to provide staff names who would be interested in circle training. And then we provided a training in June and we had, I want to say it was like 60 staff from all over the district. So I do think like circles are rippling out throughout the district in really positive ways.
Thank you. Okay.
So, will the chunkification occur before the second reading? Or is it more the desire that the second reading is to approve the recommendation for no changes and then it might be incorporated next year in the annual review?
I think it's the latter. I think it's around, the actual policy verbiage won't necessarily change between now and the second reading. And at the same time, I think it's more around how do we then take the policy and make it more digestible? So I'm excited to kind of pilot it at one school and see what works and replicate it at other schools.
Thank you.
Good question.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, of course.
So I think you're staying on?
Quick, would you take advantage of your time and just share about the opportunity Rams has in hosting the MDE?
Oh, yes.
Rams is hosting an MDE conference in June, and it's a three-day conference. It's offered all over the state, but because we're hosting and partnering with MDE, we get some additional spots. And there's some really good energy at Rams around restorative practices and really strong circle keepers, not only internally in Roseville, but I would say in partnering with MDE across the state as well. So some really exciting opportunities there.
Thank you for coordinating that.
It was a real team effort, so also thanks to Cindy with Community Education and Sheri with Buildings and Crowns, like it impacts more than just a school building, especially about with summer programming and cleaning that has to happen over the summer. So it was really a team effort to make it possible. And we're also like, we'll try it and see how it goes, and it could be wonderful and totally live into our values and create great opportunities for staff learning around restorative practices. And it could be tricky in some ways, too, that we just haven't anticipated. So we're going to try it, and if it works, we'll keep doing it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you are staying on for the next policy?
Still me, yes. Tonight is the first reading of Policy 504 around attendance. The policy was reviewed by our district attendance team recently, and we have no recommended changes to the policy.
Any comments from board members? Okay, great. Well, thank you for your efforts, yeah.
Thank you.
Share it. Thanks, Melissa.
Next, we'll hear from Executive Director of Human Resources, Kenyada McCarty. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. This evening, I am reviewing Policy 104, first reading. So as part of ongoing policy review, I'm bringing forth our Policy 104, which is equal educational and employment non-discrimination. For the first reading of the policy revisions, this policy was last reviewed in April of 2018. There are some significant changes to this policy to include alignment to the Minnesota Human Rights Act, Title IX requirements and notice requirements of Section 504. The changes are also recommended based on MSBA model policy and consultation with our legal counsel. It's advised that the district, that we adopt policy and regulations for both Title IX and Section 504 to address express notice of responsible parties, grievance and complaint procedures. And these policies will be brought forth in future board meetings, so they're referenced, but they're not here tonight. So the changes are as follows. In 2.1 of this new policy revision, there are proposed revisions that align with provision with recent amendments to the Minnesota Human Rights Act, so you'll see that notified or identified in red. In 2.2, these revisions align with language in Title IX. In Section 2.3, there is a complete revision of this language, and it's based on recommendations from our legal counsel. This direct statement of non-discrimination aligns better with the notice requirements of Section 504. And again, this will, this Section 504 requires express notice of a responsible employee and also requires the adoption of grievance procedures. It's further recommended that these procedures be provided in policy to be readily available for families and employees, so that's what you'll see in that change. We have a new provision in 2.4, which is Title IX requiring school district to adopt a policy containing a notice of non-discrimination, identification of the Title IX coordinator, and reference to the school district's grievance procedures and information regarding the complaint process to make a complaint of sex discrimination, and that will also be added at a later date. New provisions are 2.5 and 2.6. Those are also reference to the Title IX policy that will be created. And then, given the new additions of the policy, this entitled Policy 104 has been renumbered. So that is just a summary, brief summary of the changes that have been provided tonight. And so I open it up for any questions that you may have.
Kenyada, are you the district's Title IX coordinator?
Yes, I am, yes.
Any comments?
And you said, I'm sorry, you said this was, all the changes were approved by our legal advisors?
They were, they were recommended, yes.
This is an incredibly important policy for us in Roseville schools, as it also shares our values, and I really appreciate the, you know, the complexity in which, sensitivity in which you addressed it.
And there's so much change. I mean, it's an area of a lot of attention in the last year or so. Appreciate you being on top of finding the different sources and getting that incorporated.
So, I'm looking at the history, so the last time this was in 2018.
Correct.
And is there, what is the schedule for this particular policy?
I will clarify that for you, but I know that there were some changes in 2020, and then, then again in 2024, then went back to the 2020 changes, especially with Title IX, and so I will double-check that, and when I come back with the second reading, I will clarify that for you as well.
So is it possible we've missed some revision dates? Is that what you're suggesting?
There may be, and I will confirm that.
That'll be great, yeah, thank you. All right, well, thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now onto action items. Oh, I guess you're staying on for this part, yes.
I was hoping I would get my 10,000 steps in today. All right, this evening, thank you again. I am bringing forth our list of licensed probationary employees who are recommended for contract non-renewal. Each year, the school district makes determination to non-renew probationary licensed staff at the close of the school year based on one or more of the following reasons. They can be discontinuance of position, decrease in enrollment, the financial condition of the school district, and district performance standards, just to name a few. The list of staff recommended for non-renewal are included in your packet this evening, and there will be a resolution that will be read shortly. Named educators that are on this resolution will receive a written notice regarding their termination and non-renewal of their contract as provided by law. The resolution will be read in full, ensuring that all of the individuals are clearly stated this evening. Upon reading the resolution, it is recommended that the board adopt the resolution terminating the continuing contracts of the probationary educators as listed at the close of the 20, excuse me, 2024, 2025 school year. And at this time, I'll ask that the resolution be read.
And I ask Acting Club Manics to do that.
All right. I introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of a probationary teacher. Whereas the following probationary teachers in independent school district number 623, be it resolved by the school board of independent district number 623 that pursuant to the Minnesota statutes 122A dot 40 subdivision 5, that the teaching contract of the following probationary teachers in independent school district 623 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2024-2025 school year for one or more of the following reasons. Discontinuance of position, decrease in enrollment, the financial condition of the school district, district performance standards. Rachel Anderson, Olivia Benson, Lynn Do, Megan Hanson, Kyle Kaiser, Dean Lindstrom, Heidi Schwartz, be it resolved that the written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law.
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion about this? Caught your question?
I think you need to do a roll call.
Do we need to do a roll call? Yes.
So you'll need to.
Sure, okay. Let's do a roll call on this one then.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director Goggins?
Aye.
Director Bogasiewski?
Aye.
Chair Shu?
Aye.
And Acting Clerk? Clerk, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenyada.
The next item, I will have Executive Director of Business Services, Sherri Thompson.
Good evening again. So this is, what you have before you is one of the steps in the annual levy process. This is actually the first step that you typically see. 916, Northeast Metro 916, does not have independent levy authority on their own. Their levy authority has to flow through the member districts. And we are presenting you tonight with their proposed long-term facility maintenance and health and safety levy for the 25, pay 26 taxes. So, and you can see there is also a resolution attached to this. They are proposing, and they have reviewed that with the business managers, and I'm also assuming the 916 board. We will increase, they are proposing an increase of $8,700 into the annual levy, so the levy will increase to $46,460 for, again, this is fiscal year 2627.
Great. So now I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving Northeast Metro 916 Independent School District's Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Program budget.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, pretty straightforward. Caught your question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
As a resolution, do we not have to vote individually?
The board has or they haven't? I don't remember a roll call vote on this particular.
Well, I just saw that it was a resolution, so I was wondering if that was needed. So it's not?
I think we've done it both ways.
Done it both ways, but whatever board's more comfortable.
It would be your.
If you'd like a roll call vote.
I thought resolutions had to be roll call votes, so.
I'll do it.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
It hurt.
You'll hurt.
Director Shaw?
Aye.
Director Goggins?
Aye.
Director Bogasiewski?
Aye.
Acting Chair Shu?
Aye.
Acting Clerk? Clerk, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are, we just completed the action items, and we have a report by, about the study session we had by our Acting Clerk, Manus Clerk.
And we moved to that a little faster. Our studies session, we had three topics. We had the KDA6 Social Studies Evaluation Report. Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Jake Vonderlinde and some members from the committee shared the program's evaluation report. We were provided a kind of a flip presentation ahead of time that we were able to watch. The presenting group was Ellis Richardson, who's a teacher on special assignment, Stephanie Shirka, who's a kindergarten teacher at Central Park Elementary, and Augustina Bore, a third-grade dual-language emergent teacher at Little Canada. They provided us an overview of the curriculum cycle. That had multiple options of that, but I'll review a couple, kind of hit the top ones. We want to adopt a curriculum that does not, doesn't require teachers to develop their additional materials to represent absent narratives and diverse perspectives. We were looking a lot at, or it's talked about the Asian and LGBTQ community, just to make sure of some of those. Provide plenty of training for teachers to learn the new curriculum and pedagogy to implementation. The recommended having a common rubric of student outcomes for each grade to ensure more consistency. And then finally, although there was a number of things, it was a very good presentation. The C creed framework is our future of the social studies education, so building the capacity to develop the questions for students to really explore where the teacher's teaching, but the students also participate in a lot of the conversation was discussed a lot. And then, we also had some new course proposals that will start for the 2627 school year, because registration's already started for this school year, so it can't be this school year. So in the registration handbook for January 2026, there would be three proposals discussed for the following school year. All the proposals got unanimous support from the DCAC. One was the AP Art and Design. It's really already a course that exists, but we're offering a third trimester option, which we have with our other AP courses. The key thing is allow some of the students to portfolio, to finish that portfolio, because the two trimesters wasn't enough time. And then the multi-learner peer tutoring, where target 11th and 12th graders, could be focused on students who have interest in education or want to assist others. It was piloted this year, so it will be more formally approved as moved forward. It was piloted in some of the MLL classrooms, shelter contact classrooms, and co-talk classrooms. And then the last was, we had a nice discussion about online physical education, too. Currently, we have the course in-person at Ross. Currently, we're losing students to other online providers, so our hope was that we would get some of those students to stay with us and be able to offer the course online. We currently do a similar type of course in the summer for avid students. Other districts are doing it, and our PE, Physical Education staff is looking how to track and make sure that it's rigorous enough and it meets our other standards. Yeah, and then we also, the last thing we discussed was the Security and Technology Levy. Executive Director of Business Services, Sherri Thompson, shared with the board the potential of considering a security and technology level, levy. She informed us that research is still ongoing, so nothing's been decided, because the District Finance Committee will review that, and then if they decide to move forward, they will make a recommendation to the board in June. But the technology in Roseville has five key impact areas. Student learning, cybersecurity, safety and security, infrastructure and communication. A few of the highlights are our internal and external video cameras. IT Director Tina Klassen has shared at a previous meeting how she gets requests almost weekly from building staff about adding cameras or doing things with cameras, so we know there's a need there. Our technology hardware, for instance, we have one-to-one student iPads at the secondary level, and laptops for all teacher-staff. The example is shared that when we went out for COVID, our KDA6 teaching staff did not have laptops, so we had to provide them with laptops. our K-6 teaching staff did not have laptops, so we had to provide them, um, with laptops. Um, and some of the money that we got from that was from what the federal government gave us, and that money's no longer around. Um, also, it ensures our secure entry systems, communications with family. Um, I think it was shared that technology, if we take out the technology staff or the people who support technology, we still spend more than five million dollars on security and technology enhancements. Um, and comparable districts our size, many of them have a capital levy or security levy. Um, and so, and also mentioned that, um, as director Thompson shared earlier, that our board policy, our fund balance, um, the next couple of years, we're gonna go into that fund balance to help make us kind of whole. So our goal would be to look at other ways that we can, um, get some revenue there, so that's kind of what we discussed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, um, we are now at the agenda item for board reports. Um, I'm gonna just be random today. How about Director Bogieszewski?
I actually have nothing to share tonight as a board.
Okay, great.
How about Director Shaw?
The local elected officials meeting.
To what?
Weren't you at the local elected?
I wasn't able to make it.
Okay. About, uh, Director Shaw?
Yeah, I was at the local slate meeting, so I figured you, you might.
No, go ahead.
Speak, speak about that. Well, I was at two meetings concerning Harambe. And so first of, the first one was the, um, the sort of focus group that's coming out of the, um, for, with parents and.
Steering committee.
Yeah, steering, steering committee. Great. And so, so both of those, both of those meetings, um, were sort of important first steps in getting the whole planning underway, and both of them, I thought, had, there were a lot, there was a lot of energy. Uh, we also presented, there was presented to the, uh, local government officials the idea of, of potential levy for technology. And that was, that was received with, you know, I think with, with robust discussion, so that, that was good.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I have to.
Okay.
Oh, I went, I did the, uh, American Indian parent meeting. And, uh, there, there were two things to mention. One of them is that they pretty much got to the end of their new set of goals for next year. Um, so it's a very well-run meeting and, uh, and productive. Uh, and the other thing is that they identified new leadership for, for next year's, uh, committees.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you. Director Goggins?
Um, I have a number of them. Um, attended the community advisory committee. Uh, Chair, um, Anderson was also there, um, where it was a discussion around sustainability and what the district is doing. It's a presentation that we've had an opportunity to see in the past, but there was a lot of interest and excitement around the work of the district there. Um, and then there was some discussion around, um, using that curriculum and how it's working with students, which I think was particularly intriguing to the group. And we had a tour of this building and all the different opportunities, um, and programs that are in this building that Cindy Ar, uh, Arnison, uh, gave, and did an excellent job. Um, then we, um, let's see, then there's the, you mentioned the Harambe steering committee. Um, we had a board handbook committee where we discussed or worked through a number of the topics on an early draft of what's in the book. And we are on schedule, um, produce a draft and get it to the full board at the end of June for it to be, have a conversation around it in mid-July. Um, attended, uh, MSBA presentation, um, around, uh, kind of the current situation with laws and changes around that, which is really, really excellent. Um, it's really very well done. Um, it's an hour long. It's on, um, the MSBA website, and I would highly recommend it if you have any interest, because it goes into the difference of the executive orders, the dear colleague letters, the various Supreme Court cases that are occurring, and have relevance to school, of which there are four that could have some very significant impact on us. Um, uh, and kind of, you know, the supremacy of state law versus federal law and things like that, which I've read about a lot of this stuff, but it just pulled it together for me very nicely. So if that's something of interest, it's, it's very well done. Um, the LBG TQ plus Equity Council had their final meeting for the year. Um, and, um, did some planning, uh, around next year and some potential initiatives and topics. Um, the Edger, Edgerton Cultural Open House had lots of really fun activities, um, including some that were very culturally based, like, um, you could learn the Corinne language, which was really interesting, because the letters are very different. Um, and, um, some Corinne weaving, there were haircut and braiding, there were Native American games, Latino dancing. It was just really well done with great family attendance, and it was, uh, a lovely evening. Um, AMSD, um, had their meeting on Friday. Um, they gave, uh, basically a review of the bills that passed, and those still under negotiation, and the difference between the governor's, uh, house and senate spending targets. Um, the one thing that is, a couple of things that are through is the unemployment insurance will be funded with a hundred million dollars pulled from another source. Um, so that will at least cover this year and hopefully into next year. And, um, then the, um, omnibus bill pension plan was assigned into law, but everything else, there's still lots of, and that allows teachers to retire, um, slightly more favorable conditions. Um, and then there's a lot of things that are in the works, and we'll see what happens with a special session. Then the last thing I wanted to mention was DCAC. Um, the, um, I mean, uh, there were two topics that were covered. One was the social studies, uh, materials for seven to twelve. A lot of what we heard for K-6 was, um, kind of similar themes. It was fascinating to me to see how, um, for the general courses, uh, the textbooks just really aren't useful anymore, especially as you're trying to teach skills, not facts, but how to, how to use those skills in different topics and different historical happenings. Um, and so how much they use, um, articles. Um, and, um, heard a lot about Newzilla, um, which is access to thousands of articles that the students and teachers will have available. It's very expensive, but they, um, used it at FASIS last year and saw some real reading gains, because not only does it have all these articles, you can adjust, to take the content, adjust it to reading levels, which, um, allows for just adjustments for students in the class. And get, uh, the students can get immediate feedback about the students' writing. And it just, it was, it was very exciting to see the advancements and, uh, the innovative nature of what this, uh, the teachers are doing and how they're using the Wednesday morning meetings to keep everybody aligned and identify issues that need to work with, so they can get that comment of form and assessment and skills development. Um, uh, because as I said, textbooks, they don't help you with that analysis, that critical thinking that they're trying to develop in skills. And so it was just, it was really neat to hear. And then they also got to hear kind of the overview of all the different, um, uh, subjects and the, uh, curriculum review process that we, we got, uh, at a meeting earlier this spring.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, acting clerk?
Sure. Um, it was the, we had our last SEEK meeting, it was Special Education Advisory Committee meeting of the year. And we had a guest speaker from the Minnesota Disability Law Center, um, which they are, um, provide advocacy for people with disabilities in the state of Minnesota. So the person did a very good job. We also had another presentation from Stephanie Warner, who was a special education teacher at EDW, and it was on advocating for students with disabilities, um, around bullying. And then executive director, um, Nicaeta Thomas has provided the group with a nice overview of what's happening, what the changes, um, that will happen in, um, student services for next year. Um, attended the EDW PTA, um, and they discussed, uh, successful spring fling. I was not able to attend, but I know Dr. Lake was there, there. Um, they voted on new PTA member, and Principal Wade also provided them an update on the summer construction project, and they're all very excited to see how that will look in the fall when they, um, return. And then got to attend some, uh, spring sporting events, which I like to do. Uh, track and field conference finals were last week, and this week, I think they have sectionals tomorrow on Friday. Um, got to attend the baseball game yesterday. We tied it in the sixth or seventh, but lost in extra innings, but they have another game tomorrow in sectional, so exciting times around some of things there.
Thank you. Um, so the only thing I will add is that, um, um, for anybody here listening to the school board meeting, we have an event this Saturday that, um, I'm very glad that Roseville Area School is hosting. It's at the Roseville Area High School, and it is an event celebrating teachers and educators at, in the metro area with a satellite site that we will be live streaming in St. Cloud State and Ferguson Fall. So I really, so this is kind of part of my work in Elevate Teaching, and it's just been really grateful for the partnership in, in this project. We have over a hundred something people signed up. And so it's a great way for different districts coming together and really celebrate. And it is not, so somebody asked me, is it, can, can I come if I'm not a teacher or educator? I go, absolutely, that's what we are celebrating, right, as a community. So, so please come, uh, it's this Saturday from ten to two. Uh, there will be food, it's a free event. Um, it will start in the, in the performing arts center, um, and we'll have also a keynote by our twenty twenty-four Teacher of the Year, Tracy Bird. And then we'll have a panel discussion in the afternoon. We have a couple of performances. And so a great day to celebrate, and it's a great way to highlight, um, and highlight the district that we are having, having it happen here. So, uh, if anybody wants more information, it's www.elevateteaching.us/et-twenty-twenty-five. Yeah, so, thank you. Last thing for you to, to an update.
It struck me with pride. It's not a part of my formal superintendent report, but May is, uh, Asian-American. Month recognizing all the contributions and greatness of our, our Asian-Americans. And I just caught me that, uh, acting chair, Dr. Rose Chu, is in a moment right now. Thank you for your leadership. And also for the Edgerton Ice Savers, the leadership of Dr. Yang Chang and Sue Collins and our student body in Edgerton, as well as, uh, an Asian-American identifying state speech competitor in Logan. So it was quite the night to recognize all the contributions of all of our students and staff and families across the district.
Thank you for pointing it out. Yeah, thank you.
And as we enter the final stretch of the school year for most of our students, staff, and families, I'd like to take a moment to thank each and every one of you for your unwavering commitment to our students. Your dedication, creativity, and hard work make a difference every single day, but especially now as we approach the finish line. Whether you are supporting students academically, socially, or emotionally, your efforts are what makes Roseville area schools a place where every student can thrive. A special shout-out to our Harambe staff and students who are currently on their intercession break. Enjoy this well-deserved time, and we look forward to welcoming, welcoming you back next week. This is also a time for celebration. Together, you all have accomplished so much this year. Relationships built, academic growth achieved, meaningful experiences shared, and bonds formed that will carry forward. Across the district, we're recognizing these milestones with celebrations big and small, both from the sixth grade track meet and district-wide art show to Wednesday's first-ever graduates from our dual-language Spanish immersion program, and also Friday night's Native American honoring ceremony. Next week, we look forward to honoring our eighth graders at Rams and Parkview, as well as our graduates at Fairview Alternative High School, Roseville Area Learning Center, as well as Roseville Area High School. Congratulations, as you should be incredibly proud of all you've accomplished this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. So this, uh, final section, I want to talk it through. This is, um, kind of thank you for the grace that you're extend to me being the first, you know, first time acting as chair on behalf of, um, our chair, Todd Anderson. Um, so we're gonna have a closed section, so I'll be asking, um, for a motion. And then when the motion get passed, uh, we will close this open meeting, and then the meeting, uh, will be closed to the public.
We'll take a brief intercession.
Yeah, we'll take a little break in between so that it gets set up. Um, Wayne is behind the scenes setting that up, and then we'll come back for the closed section. Uh, when we finish, we'll close the closed session, and then reopen the, um, open meeting before we adjourn. Did I do that all correctly? Okay. Just had to talk that through. Great. So I entertain a motion for this closed session, and you'll have the, uh, if whoever agrees to do that as, um, to, to read the motion.
I move to close the meeting to evaluate the performance of Superintendent Dr. Jenny Lake as permitted by Minnesota statute, section one three D point one five, or zero five, subdivision three A.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Called to question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, motion carries. So the open meeting is closed. Did he say the yes? Something's on, okay. All right, we, um, we are back.
Reopening.
We are gonna, I'm gonna reopen the open meeting, and.
Is there any other business pieces over the board? No?
Yeah, any business? No?
Hearing none.
All right, hearing none, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn.
Done.
Done.